For the school trustees of the school city of E Chicago. The time is now 6:05. The place is the administration building, 1401 East 144th Street, East Chicago, Indiana, 46312. This is also being shown via live stream at www.scec.k12.in.us. This is the meeting of the school board and public for the purpose of conducting the schools' corporations' business, and it's not to be considered a public community meeting. Madam Secretary, roll call, please.
Trustee Gomez.
Present.
Trustee Smith.
Present.
Trustee Rodriguez.
Present.
Madam President Gibson-King.
Present. Now, we'll turn the meeting over to our superintendent, Dr. Borne.
Good evening, school board of trustees. Our first item for our work session is a presentation from one of our educational partners, Communities in School, and I will turn it over to Mr. Johnson and his associates.
Good evening. My name is Thomas Johnson. I'm the director of operations for Communities and Schools of Northwest Indiana. A lot of us, a lot of you all know us as North Lake County, but we're trying to branch out, so we're using our current name. So I'm here with Ms. Anika Dawkins. She is actually our regional site coordinator supervisor, and we want to thank you for your time today, and we want to make sure we respect your time. So the reason why you have a handout is because that's the data, and actually, our PowerPoint is going to be longer than the actual time constraint. So I want to thank you for your time. So Communities and Schools of Northwest Indiana, I'm really glad that we have the opportunity to explain who we are. A lot of people know us, or they put us in a box as just an after-school tutoring program, but we actually are much more. Our mission statement is to surround students with a community of support, empowering them to stay in school and achieve in life. We do this by serving the students holistically, so not only in the classrooms, but we try to identify some of the risk factors that are preventing them from being successful. And we do this through providing integrated student supports. So by definition, according to Child Trends, integrated student supports is defined as school-based approach to promoting students' academic success by developing or securing or coordinating supports that target academic and non-academic barriers to achievement. So that's exactly why we have our site coordinators that work in the school district. Their job is to work with the administrators in the schools in identifying students who may exhibit risk factors in academics, behavior, or attendance. The history of Communities and Schools in the school city of E Chicago. Actually, Communities and Schools has been in operation since 2002. However, since 2008, Community Schools, with the help of my executive director, Patricia Sims, has been delivering services in the district since 2008, actually through the 21st Century Grant, the first Cohort Four, if I may, if I'm not mistaken. So through Cohort Four is actually our entry into school city of E Chicago. And we did this through providing after-school enrichment programs and services in the school district. I believe we started out at Central High School Block and I think it was Washington Elementary and Lincoln Elementary. Through the funds of the 21st Century Grant, CIS was able to provide all of these services from 2008 until 2023 at all expense covered from Communities and Schools. And I'll get back to 2023. But from 2008 to 2023, Communities and Schools provided all these services, which meant the materials and the staffing, pay for staffing, tutors, program managers, and so forth, at no cost for the school district. Now, the school district did provide us with in-kind services such as space and Sedexo at the time, I believe, was providing food services for the students who participated in these programs. And transportation, thank you so much, and transportation. So.
So I'm going to talk about the role of a site coordinator, because I was at Central High School for the past nine years as a site coordinator. So with this new role, I kind of oversee the site coordinators at the school level. So I'm just going to talk to you a little bit about what they do. A site coordinator is the main person, the main point of contact at the school. So we work with the principals, the support staff, teachers, custodians, I work with everybody at the school. So they would be the first main contact at the school. We also identify the students' needs and we remove the barriers from success, or remove the barriers to success. We provided one-on-one case managed students, or case management for our students, and we connected the students and families with resources in the community. And these resources consist of mental health, SEL, tutoring, food services, whatever basic needs in regards to clothing, coats, pens, pencils, folders, whatever it might be that hindered their success or hindered them from getting to school. We also coordinate with school-wide activities that promoted our ABCs, so that's your academics, the attendance, and behavior. Then we also partner with teachers, staff, and families to make sure that the students stayed in school. And lastly, we were responsible for implementing the CIS model within the school. So the CIS model kind of looks like this diagram here. We have CIS affiliates, which we're considered one of the CIS affiliates, and then we have the site coordinators on the school level, and then we collaborate with partners. So even if it's bringing partners into the school to bridge those gaps, we were able to do that. So the first thing that a site coordinator does in the school is conduct a needs assessment. We do this by collecting data from community members, from students, from parents, and from teachers, and all the levels of school staff. Then from there, we plan. So we had to figure out what's the greatest needs, what kind of goals are we going to have for that school. We also use the school improvement plan that the principals put out, so that we can know what are the areas of strengths and what are the areas of weaknesses. And of course, we can enhance the strengths, but we definitely wanted to hone in on those weaknesses, so that we can provide the supports for our students and their families. So then from there, once we planned the supports and programs, then we're able to integrate these supports. So henceforth, the tutoring programs, henceforth the SEL, where we mentor the students. Those are just some examples. And then we successfully implement, you all might know about the MTSS model, and so we provide services on a tier-level support. So it's tier ones, tier twos, and tier threes. Your tier ones was for the whole school, so we make sure that we had programs that incorporated all the school body. Then we broke it down, where we now need groups of students that have specific needs, so then that's our tier two. So whether it was behavior things that was needed, grief sessions that were needed, those students that had specific needs, we were able to hone in on that. Then lastly, our tier three. So that's where we would get with the students one-on-one and provide that case management for the students during the school day and after-school as well. So then, the next piece, number four, is monitoring and adjusting. So when we create student plans and the school plan, we have to look at how are these services, how are they going? Are they going well? Are they not going well? And if they're not, we have to switch up some things, we may have to change some goals. So that's where our monitoring and adjusting came in. We would use Skyward, obviously, to look at grades, so that we can look at behavior, attendance, and all of that, and be able to, you know, kind of just switch up the services if they needed to. And then lastly, our evaluation process. We're always evaluating our staff, as well as our services that we're providing, and we do this with our school principals, we do this, we're doing this now with the parents and the students, just trying to get a feel of what it is that they have need of, because their needs may change at any given time. And I spoke about the needs assessment. So what we do with the needs assessment, like I said, we're going to collect this data, and I already mentioned this, we're going to use the school support plan to address the needs of the school, whether it's academic or whether it's non-academic. Then we're going to work with the school leadership and staff to prioritize those needs. What is it that we need to provide that would increase testing scores, for example? So whatever that is, increase their attendance rate. So whatever it is, we need to assess that and be able to provide supports for the schools. And last but not least, we identify supports that the school needs but don't currently have. So if there's needs that they have and they don't have a support there, then we need to get, yes, two minutes? Thank you. Then we need to get out there and be able to meet those needs for the students and bring those partnerships in and bring those programs in. Then the next level, the school planning level, we meet with the school support team, so the SST team, we meet with them, we focus on school-wide goals, we focus on the targeted group and the individual supports. That's your tier three, tier twos, and tier ones. We collaborate with the partners to make sure that these plans are in action. And then lastly, we have goals for our students and for the schools, and then we track their progress and be able to provide the best possible supports for them. Next, I mentioned this already, we also have integrated student supports, so that's your tier ones, tier twos, and tier threes, which I already went over that, so I don't have to repeat those to you. And then lastly, no, not lastly, integrated supports for students, all students, that's our tier one supports. Case-managed students only, that's our tier twos and our tier threes. We have a referral process where the teachers can refer students to us that have specific needs, and then we can help them throughout those needs, even if it's with their families. And I already kind of talked about that. Oh, lastly, at the end of the school year, we do an annual assessment and determine if those students have met those goals and if we've met the school goals. The monitoring and adjusting, can I go through this really quick? Site coordinators continuously monitor students and school progress, and we adjust the supports as needed to optimize results. And then, once school support plans have been identified, we put a plan in place, and we continue to meet with the students and the families, the teachers, and everybody to make sure that everything is working properly for those students to do better and increase their academics and non-academic goals. And lastly, our evaluation process, again, we assess partners and students supported by our CIS affiliate, and we demonstrate results and improve practices. CIS also conducts evaluations of their entire CIS model, both in the school-wide and individual student level. And then lastly, our national office is a third-party evaluations, where we network together, then they ensure fidelity, that we are documenting and that we are producing this data that shows that the students are improving, and if they're not, are we progress monitoring and are we providing different supports for those students?
Want to be respectful of time, so the only thing I would say in regards to this slide right here, I mentioned previously that from 2008 to 2023, that all of the services were provided solely by Communities and Schools. In 2023, Steve Ballmer actually partnered up with CIS National, and he donated $165 million to our national office. Now, we weren't able to get access to those dollars he made available if we were able to partner with a school who would match some of the funds in order for us to continue delivering those services. So that's where School City of E Chicago, for the last two years, have been partnering with us in delivering this service and being part of this initiative. So we actually started in 2023, and it's still going, and the third year is next year, and hopefully will end in 2026 on a good note. But before then, all of the services were provided by, or funded by, excuse me, Communities and Schools. So I want to thank the school board and the School City of E Chicago for always supporting us, and especially with this initiative. We wouldn't be able to be eligible for that initiative if it wasn't for your support, so I just wanted to take that opportunity and thank you all for your support in that initiative as well, because it allows us to bring in more site coordinators. So through this initiative, we were able to bring in three site coordinators to work at the high school, the middle school, and one of the elementaries, and we're actually looking to continue to expand on that. I want to be respectful of your time, so I don't know if I have enough more time, or...
Got any questions? Go ahead, just, go ahead, the trustee Gomez.
You just mentioned that one of the elementary schools, which one?
Lincoln Elementary, as part of this initiative, Lincoln Elementary.
Students, I know you mentioned that teachers refer them. What other types of referrals happen? Do they come from counselors or deans? How do the referrals happen?
So the referral process, the site coordinators, we have a referral form, and we have a letter that goes out with that, that's attached to that form, and it identifies the process. We put that in the teacher's mailbox, as well as in an email, so that they can have an electronic form. It goes out to the whole staff at the schools. And then in return, they refer students, and it outlines what's the needs. They just check off the needs, and then we follow up with the student and the family and the teacher or staff who referred them, and then we provide those services and keep them updated as to how that student is doing with those services.
So the family is in the loop?
Oh, yes. We have consent forms that have to be completed by the families and the parents before we can even work with the students. So we do the referral process, but we still have to get that consent form and get permission from parents, and then we document that and have that data as well.
How do you handle, we have a large second-language community here, how do you manage with those that are not, English is not a first language for them?
So we do, we partner, if we're in the school, we partner with school staff that may be Spanish-speaking, and we also have a Spanish-speaking staff in Communities and Schools. So therefore, if there is any language barriers, we're making sure that the Spanish-speaking staff with Communities and Schools is speaking with that parent.
And all of our documentation is also translated into Spanish.
Oh, we have that part.
If a family only speaks Spanish, we have that document ready for them.
Great, thank you.
Anybody else from the board? I'd want to ask a question. How many schools are you in? How many of our schools are you in?
We do services in all the schools.
Yeah, so you're in all of our schools?
All the schools.
So how many staff members do you have?
Well, we have three full-time site coordinators. Now, what we do, and Ms. Dawkins.
So I keep in contact with the principals and with the sales. So if there are any needs that they have, any collaboration that needs to be done, then I go directly to the schools and help them out with whatever that they need. So they would contact me, and then I also keep in contact with them, just periodically sending emails, they all have my cellphone number, so if there's anything that they have need of, where there's not a site coordinator present, then I'm able to go in there and help out and provide the services that they may need.
So you say you have only three, three, three...
I'm sorry, go ahead, ma'am.
Three staff peoples that works in all of our schools?
We have three site coordinators that are assigned, one is assigned to EC Central High School, one is assigned to Block, and one is assigned to Lincoln Elementary, that's through the initiative. Now, in the schools where we don't have a full-time site coordinator, that's where she comes in. So we tried to go and visit those schools periodically to make sure to find out what are the needs. One of the things we did was, we partnered up with the local uniform clothing store. So we find out that some students are not, they have insecurities in terms of clothing. So if there's any students that don't have any uniforms, they are referred to us, and we take the voucher over to the clothing store, and then we bring that back to them. So one of the things we just did too, this week, was we did a teacher appreciation. So Ms. Dawkins, at all the schools, made sure that every school had snacks and so forth, just to show appreciation to all of them. So even though we don't have a full-time site coordinator at every school, our presence is still there.
Yeah, and I did hear you say your services through a grant is free, something that we have to match dollar of this?
Yeah, so this Ballmer initiative, the only way for us to have been eligible to be a part of this initiative was, we needed the school district to match some of the dollars in which we were able to provide those site coordinators. So basically, in so many words, the site coordinators that are in the district, Communities and Schools, we fund half of their pay, and then half the other pay is funded by School City of E Chicago.
Okay. Okay, okay, then thank you, okay, thank you.
Thank you so much.
We would like to actually go off the agenda for sake of time of one of our other presenters to go to item 6.05 to 6.09, which are all the amendments for the collective bargaining agreement, and then we'll go back with the regular, the pre-board meeting. So we're going to have our labor attorney, Mr. Trent McCray, carry us through the major changes through those five CBAs.
Good evening, Madam President.
Good evening.
Trustees, Dr. Borne, counsel. Before you is the Local 73 SEIU CBA amendments overview. There are five units under Local 73. The first is security. The term of this CBA that we negotiated during these rounds of negotiation, before I dig any deeper, let me just take my hat off to all the participants in the negotiation team. Between the five units, we had to meet over a dozen times over the course of the past few months, in order to make sure that we negotiated the contracts in good faith, and we dotted every I and crossed every T. So I really enjoyed working with that group to get to this point. The security contract term is beginning of this year to the end of this year. What was negotiated was that after-school special events, the bargaining unit employees would receive a $20-an-hour rate. They would receive a 3% raise, one-time stipend of $800. And we also memorialized what the progressive discipline would look like in that unit. Step one being verbal, two, written, three, final written and/or involuntary transfer, and four, termination. Before I go on to the next slide, members of the board, are there any questions? No questions, okay? If you think of something and you want me to go back, I'm happy to return to an earlier slide. The next bargaining unit is custodial. Their contract is a four-year contract that expires next year, ending 12/31/26. In the contract, there's a provision that allows the bargaining unit and the district to renegotiate wages, and that's what we did in this case. Custodial will receive a 3% raise, a one-time $1,100 stipend, and we will remove Easter recess from the holiday schedule in the CBA going forward. It's my understanding that in the '25-'26 school year, Easter recess will be included district-wide in a so-called Dingus Day, formerly known as Dingus Day, that will be district-wide, so there's no need to have a specific provision in the custodial contract. One asterisk about this, back in December of 2004, 2024, we entered a settlement agreement with Local 73 over a Dingus Day that some employees did not receive as a day off for the last two school years. We negotiated that they would receive one extra day for Christmas break in 2024. They would receive two floating holidays that they could use. that they could use anytime after January 1st, 2025, up to 12/31/2026. And the third negotiation was, is that we would not remove Dingus Day from the contract until the contract expired. The third requirement is moot now, because we've renegotiated the contract. But the other two requirements are in effect. And Dr. Bornet has instructed me to speak with payroll and financial to make sure that that is executed properly with the payroll and the employees affected. That was a long footnote, but I think it's important, because it addresses the third bullet point, a fourth bullet point. Are there any questions before I move on from custodial? The, I'm sorry, the 3% raise, so unclear as for... Because this is, the term of the contract is beginning in '22. So, are we looking at retro payment for the raise, or is it for the subsequent year? It will be retroactive for the trustee Gomez, going back to January 1st, 2025. So, this is the, let's see, this is a five-year, five-year contract. This will be year four.
Madam President, can I ask a quick question?
Oh, sure, yeah.
So, just so I understand it correctly, this was just negotiated as a wage reopener? Right, not all of the, okay.
That is correct.
Okay.
With the exception, counselor, of the Easter recess holiday. The next unit is transportation. The term of this contract is the beginning of '25 to the end of '25. There were several sections that were affected. Drivers and aides will be paid an extra hour for each run added to their routes. The drivers and aides will receive an across-the-board $3-an-hour rate increase. They will receive a one-time $500 stipend. Out-of-district trips outside the catchment area of School City of East Chicago, drivers will receive $24.75 an hour, and aides $17.34. For in-district trips inside the catchment area, drivers will receive $22.35, and aides $17.10. Summer school, drivers and aides will be paid for a minimum of five hours. If there is a cancellation at the discretion of the district, the workers will be paid for a minimum of two hours. Late-run wages, drivers and aides will be paid at their hourly rate. And in order to maintain the safety and cleanliness and health of our students, the buses are required to be washed once a month at the rate of $20 per hour. Lastly, is a chart just showing the five positions, and what the current salary is, and what the salary will be retroactive, trustee Gomez, to January 1st, 2025. Any questions before I move on from transportation? I didn't see section two. I'm looking, I'm looking for section two. Oh, section two? That is, the citation is referring to the section in the CBA that that added run will be affected. That's what I'm looking at right now. Page two here, on page two. I don't quite know what you're looking at. Dr. Bornet, can you, is there a book that he's referring to?
What page do I want, Jess?
Page two.
Page two. Whose contract? Transportation?
Transportation.
So, they're looking at the CBA, which is what you'll share with the board, in addition to the actual amendments?
Oh, I see. There should be an article that describes routes, and then section two would be an added route. The fourth unit is paraprofessionals. The term of this contract is from January 2025 to December 31st, 2027. That means we won't have to renegotiate this contract for another year or so, because this is a two-year contract. The paraprofessionals will receive a 3% raise, retroactive to 1/1/25, and a one-time stipend, stipend in the amount of $1,100. Paraprofessionals will now receive substitute pay in the amount of $100 for a full day, and $50 for a half-day. In the case of emergency school closings, pairs will have the option to work the full day or leave early without receiving pay. They can put in their entire full day and work on other things. And if they decide to leave early when the school is closed, they would do so without being paid. And lastly, we memorialized that any notices of discipline need to be issued within five days of an alleged infraction. Dr. Bornet insisted on this particular provision, because we discovered that there had been an unfortunate lag between the alleged incident date and the reporting thereof, making it difficult to conduct a thorough investigation when it's not fresh on people's minds, preserving evidence, interviewing witnesses, whatever the case may be. So, we're going to strike while the iron is hot going forward. Lastly, the paraprofessionals' retirement benefits will mirror the custodial CBA. They are going to adopt in full the custodial CBA article with respect to retirement and those requirements. They will receive a quarterly attendance bonus of $100. If they had no call-offs within a three-month period, then they will be eligible to claim $100, maximum of $400 for the calendar year. E-learning days, pairs shall be paid whether students are present or not, if it's asynchronous or synchronous e-learning. And recognition for Paraprofessionals Appreciation Week. The paraprofessionals are recognized now, but we wanted to formalize it. It will be the week after spring break, and the units will be working with their prospective schools on what such an appreciation would look like. Any questions before I get off of paraprofessionals? I believe that will conclude it, Ms. Simmons.
Can I step in on paraprofessionals on the retirement benefits to equal the custodians? So, paraprofessionals, they were, I'm not going to say never, but last year, I had a conversation with them, being, talked about retirement. They have told me that they were never, had the chance to have to input to their retirement, understanding that they're part-time, but no one never came to them and said, "Hey, we have this company that you can put actually your money into for retirement." So, they have no retirement. And some, and as all of y'all know, mostly y'all know, is that our paraprofessionals have been here 20, 25 years. So, when they walk away, they walk away with nothing. And some of them are ready to retire. So, last year, I do believe this should have been in the, in the contract last year. It might not have made it, but the custodial's contract says that they get, I do believe, 300 per year that they've been here, but they have to be here 15 years. So, that was the reason why we put the retirement part in the paraprofessionals, because they walked away with nothing.
Thank you for shedding light on that, Ms. Simmons. Any questions from the board, Madam President?
Oh.
Madam President, I do have a question. And with regards, if you go back to one of three, you mentioned the $1,100.
Yes.
And I'm assuming the $1,100 is from the, the raise. If we start the raise at January 2025, are you accumulating from January till now? Is that what that $1,100 is, as far as the stipend? Or is it works, or was the stipend work that was performed previously, or?
Ms. Simmons can answer that question 100% correctly, but I'm going to take a guess at it, if you don't mind. And that is, it's not included in the raise. So, the stipend is a one-timer, and the 3% raise will go back retroactively to January 1st. Is that right, Ms.?
Thank you.
So, their pay scale has changed, right?
Their pay scale will change, right. Yes.
I got to ask a question, then, of the disciplinary action that you had in here. I'm trying to find it. Is that, is that disciplinary action for all, the, all of the, the union people here? All the, the transportation security? Is that for all of them? That's the process for all?
Are we talking about this one here? I put it back up on the board, security?
Yeah.
This is just for security. The progressive discipline is general across the board for all the units, with the exception of maybe teachers, because it's a different ballgame. But in this instance, we had negotiated this particular aspect because of some ongoing discipline issues we were dealing with, with security, and involuntary transfer. So, in order to remedy that situation going forward, we just put this, we reduced this to writing, where security would have these four steps. And they know that after the written discipline, level two, that level three can include involuntary transfer. Therefore, they cannot grieve an involuntary transfer as being improper. They're, they know that that's part of the progressive discipline.
That was the question I was going to ask you about the disciplinary portion, the verbal written and final written. Have all of these particular positions, I mean, paraprofessionals, all of them, have they been, have they been informed of the process?
Yes, trustee Smith, we had a retreat.
Okay.
I think, I want to say, time has gotten away from me, Dr. Bornet, was that before the holidays?
January.
January, after, right after the holidays.
Okay.
Where Dr. Bornet had his entire leadership team.
Okay.
And we trained the principals, as well as the program directors, Mrs. Paul, and the several other program athletic director was there, the entire leadership team. It was incumbent upon them to go back to whoever was under them to make sure that they were familiar with the process. I made myself available to anyone who had any questions, because one thing I discovered when I came in September of 2024 is that there had been some inconsistencies on how certain procedures are happening. We were charged, Dr. Bornet charged me with trying to make sure we have something concise and uniform and systematic going forward to replace the process that was more hodgepodge.
Thank you. I guess my question is, okay, this is security. So, this is, this language is in their contract, right?
It will, it will be in the one that trustees ratified.
So, now, is that same language in, in transportation? Is this in transportation too?
This is only in security.
Okay, so, only, that's, that's their language?
Right.
Okay, all right. So, no other department, that can't be put in to their contract? Not now? No, they have, they do have their own stipulations as to how they want to...
They do. They do have their own path of progressive discipline, which is all consistent.
Okay.
We just added something here, because the need had arisen where we had to involuntarily transfer. It's also happened, not only in security, but in the custodial as well.
Yes.
As a, as a last chance opportunity for that employee.
That was what I wanted to ask you. Thank you for clarifying that.
Yes, ma'am. Any other questions, Madam President?
No, not for me. Rodriguez, or you got anything, trustee Rodriguez?
No questions, Madam President.
Okay, no questions, thank you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate your attention.
Thank you, Mr. McCain. And now, we may resume the regular order of the board meeting and our pre-board meeting. 3.0. Yes. So, we will be at Central High School on Tuesday, May 13th. East Chicago Central High School will do their annual report. It has been the practice whenever we are meeting at school buildings. We will also have another presentation by the Central High School Alumni Association immediately following East Chicago Central High School's school-level presentation. Questions regarding items 3.01 and 3.02. We will have the superintendent's report, as well as the executive director business operations, or the CFO's report. And now, we are ready for consent agenda. Questions regarding items 5.01, distribution of payroll? Yes. Questions, if there are no questions regarding items 5.01, items for 5.02, claim docket.
Oh, wait a minute. Okay, this is consent agenda, wait a minute. I have something on here. Oh, no, did I? Yes.
I have another question, just for those that are community schools. We don't have to stay.
Okay, wait a minute.
Oh, the mic's not on? Who's mic's not on?
Jess's? No, Diane's mic.
Oh, Diane's.
Diane's mic is not on.
I don't know if these items are cross-referenced in the next tab. First one I was noting, and have a question about, is on page nine.
Oh, we on the, uh, claim docket?
Claim docket.
Okay, let's see here. Page nine.
We are on claim docket, correct?
Yeah. Page nine, what?
Mm-hmm.
Which claim?
Um, it's the, um, First National Bank, um, nine zero six, three zero seven, E T.
You said First National Bank.
Second item on page nine?
Yeah, I see it. I don't. Oh, I see it, okay.
Ms. Simmons, the trustee has a question regarding an item on the claim docket, page nine. Check number nine zero six, three zero seven, issued to First National Bank.
Credit card payment.
Check, page nine, check number nine zero six, three zero seven.
Credit card payment.
Credit card payment.
You said it was a credit card payment?
Yes. Thirty-five.
Mm-hmm, thirty-five, eighty, and twenty-seven cents.
And is that broken down somewhere where I can see the actual, charges?
It'd be in your invoice stack.
Okay, I, I was just handed this document, so unfortunately, I've not had time to look through it.
Okay.
Ms. Simmons, wow.
Go ahead.
Oh, go ahead, I'm sorry.
No.
No, no, you said it's on, it's, it's on the breakdown in the claim dockets?
Yes, or I can go print them for you. Yeah, if you can't find them right away, I can go print them.
Okay, invoices, okay.
You want the statements?
Yes, I do.
You want the physical statements?
I want, let me make myself clear.
Okay.
On credit cards, I am requesting from you, the CFO, I want a credit card statement from every administrator, on whoever board, on whoever holds a credit card in this district. I want, I don't want just a breakdown, I want the actual itemized bill for every personnel who holds a credit card. And I would like for all of that information to be distributed to the board, that's including mine and everybody that participates, that gets a credit card. That's the only thing that I want, I, I don't wanna, I want, I don't want it broken down. I want the actual credit card, itemized bill, which they come every month, if you don't mind, for everybody.
Okay.
Thank you. You don't have to do it now, but before we have our, uh, finance meeting. On page twenty, twenty, uh, twenty-one here, I was under the impression that, uh, number four, two four two D D, I thought the last time payment was, was last month. Is this the last payment?
Down the line, please.
Um, uh, eight forty-seven, forty-four.
Mr. Lopez, I be, I believe last month, we did say we, the board will probably see one more payment based on, based on when the payment cycle ended. So this should be the last payment.
Oh, this is the last payment?
Yes.
Okay, okay.
And I, I, to that, the, uh, the duties that were performed by this individual be performed by who now?
Don't have no pool.
The duties for that individual that, um, besides the pool, as far as the H VAC that he was included in, I, um, have a vendor coming in, precision, precision is coming in to help the district out. And they're gonna come in under contract. Which they are right now operating, I do believe, out of four schools, under their controls.
What is Precision's full name? Precision Builders?
I know we're in Griffin, right on Great Road.
I had a meeting once on yesterday.
Page twenty-one, Diane.
Uh, I was, wait. Excuse me, uh, I have one for, or two for page twenty. Um, it's the last two items on that page.
I don't think we uploaded that to board docs right now.
Page twenty.
Can I see one?
It's page twenty. He said page twenty, the last items.
The last two items.
Last two items.
Can you see it off?
That's, that's sure. That's sure. Children.
Mm-hmm. And whoever this other one is.
And Court Incorporated.
Mm-hmm.
D B A. I haven't had a chance to go through it.
Special ed contract?
Both of them?
The other one is, uh, we have a student that is been placed in a center. Um, I do believe it's between Michelle Walker and Clement, and that's what the first one is.
For the student?
Yes, for the student.
So this is a special needs child?
It is, I'm not gonna say it's a special needs child, I'm gonna say it's a student that has been placed in a, like, um, I'm not gonna, I'm sorry.
I thought I was talking loud enough, okay, George, I'm saying that. Okay, so, um, I'm not gonna say it's a special needs child, I'm gonna say that this person was placed in a home, and the last known address was School City of East Chicago. So we're getting the money for the child, but we have to transfer that money now to this home, this organization, which is like a group home.
So you say you, we was getting, we getting money for the child, right?
Hmm, child is included in our account.
Okay.
Okay, so child might have got in trouble, and the last known address was East Chicago. So that corporation has the right to build us for the money that we're receiving. So I do believe this bill is being paid like at sixty-three dollars a day.
So would this be something almost like, once we get the kids in for the A D M count?
That they leave?
And then they leave and go something, do this pertain to that too?
Yes, it does.
Well, how do we get busy getting that money?
I'm sorry.
How do we go about getting that, those dollars?
How we go about getting them?
Yeah, when they, when they leave and they go to something such as this.
When we leave and go to another school district?
Mm-hmm.
If they leave as a family and go to another school district, we do not get that money. Cause they're, cause I, we're getting it and they're not getting it.
Wait, but I'm talking.
But they can ask me to give it to them, only for medical. For me to give it to them. And they have, they're, I'm holding this behind, cause it's beeping. So you're referring to the transfer students?
Right.
I think, I think me and Joel discussed this a while ago. Those students that leave us, I, I'm getting the money for them. If they leave during the school year, I'm still getting the money.
Yeah, I know that, because they've already been counted in the A D M count.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. But those ones that leave another school district and don't bring, and don't bring no money, right, and their school still got the money, would that be something pertaining to this here?
Unless they did not move to the city, is when I can get to them as far as getting the money. So if they just said, well, we're just gonna send our kids over here, and not the family didn't move, I can get the money from the other school. I can try to get the money from the other school district, but they normally fight it and find loopholes here and there, but.
I just was asking, because the way you explain this, it's, it's almost same thing, they're just, this individual's like you said, in a home.
Yeah, he's in a home.
Somewhere.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, we've been trying to get that money for a couple of years from different school districts for that.
So basically, we took, just hypothetically, we couldn't meet this child's needs?
No.
No, she got in some trouble.
Got in some trouble.
Okay.
Trouble, yeah.
Okay, so.
It's not, it's not technically a special needs kid.
Okay.
Um, Dr. Yanders is gonna give a little bit more detail what the kid might be.
This is not a special needs child. This was just a child.
I'm confused, I thought I heard you say it was sixty-three dollars a day. Uh, but this monthly bill was for almost twenty-five hundred dollars.
Okay.
That doesn't equate to sixty-three dollars a day.
Is the bill broken down for you?
No, it's a single monthly billing. And that's why I'm asking the question, is that I don't recall seeing this previously. So did this?
Oh, this been, no, this been going on, I've been fighting this since last school year. No, it's been on the, it's been on the docket. Cause it's been a couple of months I refuse to pay due to the fact that I sent, um, our, uh, trust, trusted security out to make sure that the resident was still there. So, no, it's been there. And Dr. Yanders can break down a little bit more why the kid might be in this area.
So this doesn't seem to be sixty-three dollars a day?
Okay, it might be a little bit more, how much is it?
Two thousand four hundred thirty-six dollars.
Yeah, it should have a breakdown dollar a day. It doesn't have the day on there, okay.
That's, that, that equates to a hundred and twenty-one dollars a day.
Yeah, that, thinking might, I'm surprised you don't have the breakdown, but I can get you the breakdown that I get from them.
And it's, um, not so much as we could do that, so to answer, um, President King's question, I know where you were going, like, when we get kids that transferring to us after the A D M, how can we get that money from the other district that got the money? I know where you were going with that. And that's my question too. But anyway, um, this particular student, if they are placed by a state agency, that state agency, they're more aggressive, and the state tends to be on their side a little bit more, and making sure that we give that money to that state agency or placement. So like if they went to L C J C, or something like that, and when we had the Carmelite home, things of that nature, yeah.
Okay.
Mm-hmm, okay.
Got it.
Okay.
But I'm like, huh, why we can't get our money? We can't get it, right?
Oh, we've been trying.
So you finished, Trustee Gomez?
I, I have a few more.
Yeah, go ahead.
Next page, twenty-one. Uh, it's the third item down, one one seven, eight one zero.
Twenty-one, twenty-one. One one eight, what? Seven zero.
Savvy's Learning?
Yes.
Savvy's Learning, um, I wanna make, I'm sure that it is curriculum, okay?
Yeah, I was saying this here, Savvy's Learning.
Yeah, I think we, um.
Am I looking at books here?
We got Savvy's Learning came in last year, yes, this is a book order. I do believe the whole, was it just for elementary? Okay.
Seventy-five, eighty-three.
Page two twelve, page two twelve? Yeah, because.
I mean, yes, seventy-five, eighty-three. Yeah, this one.
Um, page twenty-seven. Just, uh, bottom midway down, one one seven, page twenty-one.
This is a reimbursement for a grant that came in, and it was came, came in and listed up under another fund number, and it was paid out to the correct fund.
You said this was a grant, you said?
Yeah, so we just basically moved it from one fund to another fund. And we just wanted a paper trail on it, so State Board of Accounts wanted to know why we were transferring it from one fund to another.
Uh, page twenty-eight. Excuse me, second item, I'm sorry, third item. One one seven, seven seven two.
Food service program.
Page twenty-eight.
And this is going under a different name?
That's the parent company name.
Parent company.
Mm-hmm.
You said what page was that?
Twenty-eight. Twenty-one, twenty-eight.
Page, what was the number?
Uh, one one seven, seven seven two.
Okay. He said. Okay. Food service.
Food, that's the parent company.
Yes, food service, and they're listed up under their parent, uh, L A, L S C number.
Okay, what was the next one you had on that page?
Uh, same page, it's the bottom one.
Lancaster.
Uh, Lancaster, yeah.
heated cabinet.
We bought a freezer, no, we bought a, uh, warmer for Harrison, I do believe.
Food warmer.
A food warmer.
Uh, I think the last one I have is on page thirty-two.
So what page?
Thirty-two. I'm sorry, I have two more.
Thirty-two.
Thirty-two is the, um, one one seven, eight one five. About three quarters of the way down.
One one seven, eight, uh, match.
Eight one five?
Yes.
This was the payment for, I do believe, St. Stance on that, um, invoice. I do believe this was the payment for St. Stance.
Oh, this is not us, right?
No.
This is not us, okay.
No, I do believe it was St. Stance.
Can you verify that for, for us?
Yes, it should be on that invoice that's in that, um, in your invoice, um, bundle.
Then on, uh, thirty-four, um, one one seven, eight one five.
Same page?
I'm sorry, page thirty-four. It's midway down. One one seven, eight one four.
One one seven, one eight four. One eight four, Student Savvy.
That's Savvy's also. That is, I wanna say maybe a additional on, cause it says reporting for the students.
I've seen that name before.
It's at the top, that was the one that you just asked me about. It's connected to that, but they, it's paid in two different bills.
It says top twenty.
This one here, I think it's more for the reporting, I think the other one was the books.
What number was that?
One one seven, eight one four.
What's the name of the, okay, wait a minute. Savvy, um, student. Okay, here it is, right here, student.
So it falls under title four, in the first two, three, perhaps look like insurance.
Which one are you on again? Which page?
In that same, same, the three items right above that.
You're on page thirty-six?
Thirty-four.
Thirty-four.
Okay, I'm sorry, I went down too far.
One one seven, eight one four. Student support.
So the three items above that? Those three items?
Yeah.
Those, the medicine life insurance is the insurance that we, uh, pay for our employees, and Anthem is, uh, digital, um, no, ICE. So possibility these were probably new employees that came in, and that's the reason why they're so low amount.
Yeah, I, I'm just curious why, how this falls with re-insurance plans and then?
Because that one, cause those employees are in title four. What? Medicine is the life insurance.
Correct.
And then we have Delta for dental, and then we have Anthem for ICE, and then we have United for medical.
Also, if there's an employee that is paid out of one of the title grants, whose salary is paid out of, the medical benefits also have to come out of the same title grant, or a portion up there of.
Okay, I, I guess I'll need more information on one one seven, eight one four. The last one is on thirty-six, uh, it's the last item.
I can have, um, Ms. Cetera talk about that one if possible, or Dr. Yanders. Student Savvy Incorporated.
Savvy's is our, um, our reading curriculum?
No, Student Savvy, S A V B Y.
Savvy is not justice? Okay. Okay, okay, I have to look at the invoice and tell you exactly where it came from.
So before we go off that page thirty-six, excuse me, ma'am, trustee Gomez, what the, uh, this here, uh, one-one-seven-eight-one-nine, is that the function that we just went to?
You mean eight-one-eight?
No, uh, eight-one-nine.
So that was the mentoring program that top twenty had.
Okay, this is not what we just went to?
No, 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 no.
Okay, this is.
This is Dan's top twenty.
Okay.
Yeah.
What was that, baby?
Dan's top twenty, right here on page thirty-four.
Last one I have, I'm sorry, it was on page thirty-six, the last item. One-one-seven-eight-one-eight.
This is the Seventh University, this is a mentoring program, I do believe it's at Block, correct, Dr. Yanders?
At the high school.
At Central.
What number was that?
The last one.
Oh, the Seventh University, this is at Block School?
At Central.
At Central.
Oh, Block and Central.
Okay.
Did you get the answer for Savvy? At the special ed?
Savvy Support, okay.
Okay. So I got one question for this page, you finished trustee Gomez?
Done, thank you.
Yeah, one-one-seven-eight-zero-four.
Yes.
Yes, so who is this? I mean, I know who it, it is, but what do we have to pay them for a conference for? Who went on the?
Eight-zero-four.
Conference, um, were they over? Title Con? Were they, are they, were they the administrator of Title Con? Yes.
Pardon?
Yep, it was Title Con, Conference.
Title, what now?
Title Con Conference.
Who went though? Was this, you got it under, you, you have it under, you have it under Maisy though, that, that, you have it under this contract.
They have to pay Maisy. Maisy was the organization, organization that held the Title Con.
So if it's paid out of Title III, that was our English learners director.
Okay, so who's that, Mrs., um? Okay.
I, I just have one question, I'm sorry, anybody else?
No, go ahead, uh, trustee.
Uh, page thirty-five, one-one-seven-eight-zero-one. I see it's a reimbursement, but who is this person for what?
She went on a conference, and she paid for everything, and we just reimbursed her.
What's her position?
She is a CTE director.
Well, wait a minute, what number is that?
Uh, page thirty-five, one-one-seven-eight-zero-one.
One-one-seven-eight-zero-one, oh, okay. You said she's the CTE director?
Yes.
Is this the one from Central? Oh, okay, I just, I didn't know her first name, okay, sorry. This was out of pocket, you said?
This was out of pocket.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, the questions regarding five-point-zero-two claim docket?
No, I don't, but I just wanna go back to that personnel report, uh, for a minute. Uh, anybody got any questions out of the claim docket?
No, we got to go back to the personnel report?
Yes.
Okay, where is that? Okay, here we go. Payroll, personnel.
Oh, so this, this here, Dr. Velay, um, on this voluntary transfer, this may have been one of the individuals that you asked, do they wanna go somewhere?
That is correct.
Is this what this is?
Correct. So we allowed staff members.
You wanna add number one person, oh, go ahead.
Oh, I'm sorry, we allowed staff members a window to voluntarily transfer to any vacant position at another school building, um, and those, staff members submitted those voluntary transfer requests, and the ones that are, were approved, um, did appear on this personnel report.
Okay. Uh, just on the resignation, so, number eight, so they, they got another role, is that another role in the district, or?
No, they're resigning from the district.
Oh. Okay, number eight, they resigned, right?
Correct.
Is that what you're saying, that they resigned? Only on?
Yes.
Okay. Let's hit that I had on there. Any more questions, uh, personnel report from the board?
I do have a question on, uh, page two.
Page two, on the personnel report?
Yes.
Oh, okay, let me go back to it then. Wait a minute. We go ahead, let me look.
Dr. Bonya, can you explain, uh, that? Number one?
Yes, if the board recalls, on the April twenty-second board meeting, there was, well, actually, on April seventeenth, we issued a termination agreement to our current contractor, Stone Group, and in the meantime, we sought services from Precision to address some of their HVAC issues, obviously, the weather's changing. So in that meantime, we decided to have, with the number of projects coming up in terms of construction, the number of HVAC equipment that still need to be overseen, that we were, we did fill the director of facilities position. So that item number one is the director of facilities.
Okay, um, let me see that.
President?
Yes, trustee Gomez.
Um, if I'm not mistaken, just a couple of weeks ago, we elevated somebody to facilities manager position, is that correct?
That is correct, we did fill a facilities, a building and grounds manager position in January.
This, this is frustrating.
Yeah.
Uh, I'd like to see this person's re, uh, resume, please.
Okay.
As a matter of fact, Dr. Bonya, maybe I'm just confused, this is, this, this person's name, was this, what, did he have another, was it, was two, was it two Smiths?
Yeah.
No, it's one Smith.
Okay, go ahead and ask your question.
No. Correct me, in your update, it was someone else Smith.
No, that's the same person that was updated to the board.
This was the same person that, if I'm, if, if I'm not mistaken, a while back ago, this individual was, had applied, right, this guy, this person, right?
That is correct.
Now, this is the same person again, right?
That is correct.
Same person again, but, but, uh, Ms. Smith may thinking that his name was, first name was something else.
Yeah.
Yeah, right.
Smith.
Yes.
But his name is, first name is right.
Correct.
The right thing.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure.
Well, since we're on that, then, uh, since we're there, uh, trustee Gomez, asking for the resume, what I wanna know is, Mrs. 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 Leela, Ms. Leela, um, sold these dollars that we paid these, that, that, that these people are getting paid out of these, these stipends, these stipends, all these stipends that's on this personnel report, that have been on there for the longest, where are these, what, where are these dollars coming from? Stipend dollars, where they come from?
I would have to see the personnel reports to know about the stipend.
Oh, all of them, they on there, they on there every, every, uh, for teachers and whoever, forty dollars here, twenty dollars there? Where that money be coming from?
Okay, so if they are getting stipends for attending professional development, or participating in a mentoring program, those funds are grant funded, either, either Title II or Title IV.
Oh, so they grant, okay.
Correct.
All of the, every time we see a stipend, that's grant dollars? Okay, yeah, I was wondering.
Stipend is always.
It's all grant dollars, even for the teachers, when they, uh, have after-school programs and all that stuff, right?
Yes.
So, now this individual here, that, uh, Ms. Trustee Smith, uh, Gomez is looking for, uh, is asking for, shall I say, the resume, uh, I don't know if you already know the amount that they're getting paid, do you know that, Mrs. Smith, I mean, Ms. Leela?
Yes.
What, what funds are they getting paid out of?
That will come out of the operations.
Just operations? Okay, that was my question is, concerning that individual, and all the other money, you said is grants, right? Stipends, grants, okay.
You said that's getting paid out of?
Operations.
Operations, this person.
Number one. Yeah, operations, mm-hmm. Mm-hmm.
Any other questions for personnel report item six-point-zero-one?
On page seven.
You said page seven or number seven?
Page seven.
Page seven, oh, thank you.
Okay, which, I see which one you tell me, number.
Page's May thirteenth, I'm sorry, coming up on May thirteenth.
That is correct.
We're gonna be approving coaches that started in December twenty-twenty-four. Five months later, I don't understand why this takes so long to get in front of the board for approval.
We will work with our athletic director and our human resources office to align a more effective system so that the board, um, is informed of these types of hiring decisions. However, if you recall, um, the superintendent, um, was charged by the board to develop elementary sports programs, so a number of these hires were hired at the beginning of that spring season, because we did not have previously elementary sports, um, so some of these are related to our elementary sports. A number of the items are also regular spring sports, um, because we had some, uh, staff members who were not able to coach, and so we had some swap-outs.
So they've already, um, okay, but these sports have not started yet, right?
Yeah, all these sports have started.
They have started?
Yes.
Oh, okay.
Well.
Other questions?
Volleyball, okay, that was twelve sixteen, that started.
So volleyball is concluded.
Okay, gotcha. Soccer, I'm linking. Okay, um, let me go back here.
Madam President?
Yes, trustee Gomez.
Just as I'm going through some supplemental, G H R memos, um, I note here on the, uh, on the subject of, um, the volleyball coach, I can't tell what page this is, but, um, this was dated December ninth, twenty-twenty-four. Um, there was an email apparently sent on December sixteenth, twenty-twenty-four, uh, informing, uh, that
Oh.
the original person was resigning from coaching volleyball, so I, I, we, we didn't even approve the first person, and then they resigned, and now we're
Who was somebody else?
charged with approving the second one.
I believe that is correct, to your understanding, trustee Gomez?
Oh, yes, you know what, now I see what, I see what trustee Smith is talking about, on the personnel report, number one, you got two names in here, you got two different names, so which name, look what you got right here.
Thank you for finding that, because I couldn't find it.
And then you got on the personnel report another name.
Right, that is.
That's what I was asking you, was this, was it two Smiths?
No, it's the same person, so.
What the right name is?
The weekly update has the incorrect name, it should be the shorter word, which is on the personnel report.
But what's the name, though? Is this name Drew? Oh, Drew for Andrew.
Well, then you oughtn't to be very specific.
My goodness.
Because I'm thinking, you know, they gotta do better, they have to do better at G H R, because.
Yeah, you can't do that, it's gotta be his name, Andrew.
And it's like we're being repetitious on the same.
Yeah, I see what you was talking about, because I know.
We're feeling two job positions, because they're incompetent with names.
Yes, and then, um, okay, just one more, one more minute here, Dr. Bonya here, um, man. I'm gonna have this question for Leela, uh, we gonna, we finna get off track, but I guess we can stay on track, I can get to her. Uh, you're not going anywhere, right?
Nope, she has several agenda items, but, yes, any other questions regarding the personnel?
Anybody's talking about the personnel report, then?
No, we have to get back with that, because that's, okay, hopefully, we got that straight now.
Yes.
Because I'm kinda confused, I'm like.
Yes, my apologies for the confusion.
Double hiring people, right, it was like.
Yes, see, that's what you're talking about.
Okay, so where do we are now?
So now we're on six-point-zero-two, which we already had our presentations for communities and schools. So they will have an MOU, uh, obviously, they've been dismissed, so if there aren't any questions.
So we do have the dollars to match what they want, to match their funds?
Is this a continued, continued of the grant that they have now?
We don't know.
I think they did mention that, that this is the final year for, with, with the three-year program.
The final year?
Yes, so, yeah.
Okay.
If that's the same one, that has already been allocated.
Okay.
If this is a new one, I have not seen it yet.
But, so this is still part of the three-year, Joel, okay?
What, what's stated, yeah.
Yeah, we were matching.
Okay, all right, just commending our schools, right? Now, um.
The next.
Go ahead.
So, oh, so the next item, so we'll follow up with clarifying, um, answers to the board's question around the length of this, um, agreement. Um, the next item is six-point-zero-three, it's in partnership with Purdue University Northwest. There are two MOUs under six-point-zero-three, one is a general MOU for the summer camp, which will involve fifty of our students, up to fifty of our students participate on campus for a week at Purdue Northwest, and then the other MOU is for the school city to provide transportation of those fifty students to Purdue Northwest. This is a great opportunity for our rising seniors, um, to be exposed to campus life, what it's like to learn on a college campus, and obviously, um, increase their likelihood to pursue college as one of their post-secondary options.
At Purdue University, and I haven't had a chance to read this, but this is MOU, and this is like the college camp, right? They go to Purdue.
They go to Purdue.
Okay.
You said about fifty.
Oh, I'm sorry. Thank you.
They gonna be Purdue?
Thank you, Ms. Dr. Yanders.
Mm-hmm.
My son went to Purdue.
Yeah.
For college camp. My son went to Purdue for college. My son went to Purdue for college camp. Purdue's downstate for B A.
Oh, yeah. Oh, really?
Okay. They're going to be visiting various campuses, so they'll do Purdue, I U N, Cal College, and Ivy Tech. So they'll visit a different campus every day.
Within our area?
Within our area.
Okay, but are you aware that Purdue had, I know, this is going off the record, Purdue has a camp at Purdue down in Lafayette. They have camps, summer camps for students.
Yes, they do. Those are part of the, it's H A, um, they used to go, H A used to go to those? High ability, I'm sorry.
Do they still have that?
They still have it, we haven't gone, they're overnight loans, they stay at West Lafayette.
Yeah.
For a week?
Yes, we haven't done it since we got back from COVID.
Mhm.
Don't you think we need to try to start that over again? Okay, thank you.
And is there a, um, a cost to the, um, MOUs?
MOUs?
Yes.
Uh, no, all you think we would pay this for transportation, and that's on us, to get, make sure we get our kids.
Get the there, okay. That's good.
It's just that we'll pay for the transportation to get our kids there, to make sure that they can experience going from different colleges. So basically, we'll get them there and pick them up, that's the only, uh, cost it is to the district.
On, on that note, trustee Smith kind of referenced, or triggered something in my mind, I just came back from an L A O conference, and they talked about, um, uh, inter-school district, they take kids, they take kindergarteners to the college, and then they take them again at third grade, sixth grade, and ninth grade. Um, just to get them acclimated to being on a, a college campus, something we might want to consider down the road.
I know the ninth grade is though. Well, we at Purdue, West Lafayette.
We can look into the program. Um, I do believe it's, it's been around since I was in school, so I'm pretty sure Purdue still have, have it going, so.
Elementary goes for a third through sixth, so every year to Purdue Tagle for the day.
Okay, third through sixth, so it's something we can look into with the high ability grant for our kids to go into next year.
Appreciate it.
Because we get the high ability every year. So we have the funds to make sure that it, it happens.
Doc, I do have a question.
Yes.
Dr. Yanders, I don't see, I see Purdue as far as the location for these fifty students, but I don't see the other universities and colleges.
I.
Unless that's a, a later date.
Yeah, so Purdue is the coordinator of the summer camp, and their destinations aren't listed in the, um, actual MOU, it's listed in the overall program.
Exactly, Ms. Inez, um, they go to Purdue, so I spoke with her last week too. They go to Purdue and then they go out, like, for example, if Central High School was their school, then they go on a field trip every day. So Purdue will be their school, and then they go out every day to a different campus.
Okay.
And they're gonna feed them, you know, they like.
Oh, we have to feed them too, right?
Purdue will.
Oh, okay, so we just provide transportation?
Yes, ma'am.
Oh, that's good.
Now Jeremy's supposed to, what about this?
Okay. Are we ready for item six point zero four?
Yeah, we're doing it.
Item six point zero four is our technology intern summer program. I will have Mr. Ontiveros come forward to give us a brief overview.
Good evening. Um, tech, technology is just requesting our, um, eight students from the C T E Computer Science Program to work, um, to work over the summer. Uh, traditionally, we do have, or previous years, we've had our, uh, students that come in for our student interns, worked excellent every summer, we've always had a great batch of kids. So we're requesting eight again this summer, uh, to continue the process for them to understand what we do in, as far as in technology in Chicago.
So do they, uh, volunteer, I mean, you know, they fill out the application or the?
So the process is they, the C T E program first asks students if they're interested. Um, because some of them already have, are working, or some of them are in sports, or what have you, so, uh, usually, they, we have about ten to fifteen students that show interest, and we have a questionnaire from that point on. So, um, from that questionnaire, it's a lot of technology questions. Uh, but usually, by that time, for the past three or four years, um, some of these students, they kind of fade on their own because they do get another job or something, so we, we usually have about eight students left. So we, we pick those.
So do you job these, can you job these children out?
Excuse me?
No, I'm just being funny. Because I, I use a lot of technology, and I do pay.
Yeah, so.
So maybe I should do a MOU.
We'll see.
Okay, let's talk about it.
We'll have that conversation.
Um, so these students will be getting paid as well?
Correct, uh, they are getting paid fifteen dollars, or, the, the request is fifteen dollars an hour. Uh, it's only from eight A M. to twelve noon, and it's only Monday through Wednesday.
So who picks the students?
The C T E program. They re, they get recommended.
Which C T E program?
The computer science.
So that would be computer science program? Okay, let's see.
And I'll, I'll ask the, uh, annual question, um, they're not going to be involved in any, um, ideas that would be sensitive in nature?
Not at all. Not at all, it's, um.
They're not involved in any, like, great grades and any person, they won't be able to look into other people's.
Oh, they're just, they're just being trained.
No, it, it's basic technology skills, um, but nowhere near our sensitive information, nothing that they can use to apply to something different next school year, um, no, nothing like that.
The, the conference I mentioned that I was at th, this week, um, they talked about, um, it was a STEM, uh, a program, so are these kids learning? Forgive me, because I'm a little ignorant on this myself, are they learning coding, what, 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 what are they learning? What, what's, what are you taking away from this?
Not necessarily coding, they're, uh, more, uh, soft skills, uh, basic computer skills, uh, something you will get, uh, at, from Best Buy. Um, you know, basic computer knowledge of what a computer is, how they, uh, you know, not intricate, uh, fixing, uh, but just, uh, the knowledgeable, or knowledge part of what a computer is, how they get moved from one location to another. Um, just the concept of what we're doing, but nothing sensitive, again, nothing where it's too elaborate for them to, it's beyond them, pretty much. So it's more of a basic, uh, A plus first semester, uh, skill set.
Okay.
So the kids, um, where would they be doing this, um, programming at, where would, what school they'd be at?
So we, uh, since we have Chromebooks throughout the district, what we do is, depending on where they live, uh, we try to, um, break two teams, uh, since we're asking for four, we try to break two teams up to four students each team. Um, so if some students live in the harbor, we try to isolate a school in the harbor, and we send a technician with them. So if, uh, some students are closer to Lincoln, we say, hey, you know, we're gonna meet at Lincoln this week, uh, for the three days, uh, we have, we assign a team leader uh, within the students, and, uh, they do what they have to do for that week at that school. Then the following, and then, again, the other four students, if they're in East Chicago, they have a team leader there, they meet at Harrison or what have you, for the week. So we rotate schools.
Uh huh.
Uh, and then we also rotate team leaders. So again, those soft skills for the students, you know, uh, so everyone gets a chance to do, uh, a leader in that week, just, uh, to help promote their, themselves.
And the program is for the summer, how long, how long is this?
It's from May twenty sixth, which is the Monday after school finishes, all the way through July thirtieth. So that's that Wednesday before school starts.
July thirtieth.
Yeah, and it's only, again, three days a week, uh, eight A M. through twelve. So if they're into sports, they can still continue their sports in the afternoon.
Okay, thank you.
Any questions?
If there are no more questions for six point zero four.
Just, uh, I'm sorry, just one more question, how, how would, how does this apply for them in terms of graduation? Do, do they get credits for this?
Well, usually, the ones that are interested are seniors, are, um, or, I'm sorry, juniors going to seniors.
Okay.
Um, it's not based on anything as far as school credit or anything like that, it's whoever's interested, pretty much, whoever's interested in the program.
Okay.
Oh, I do have one thing before we start, and I, it might not pertain to this, how are we doing with esports?
Esports is, uh, it's still there, it's still in E C A, uh, we are, um, having conversations of transitioning, transitioning to a, a, a new leader, a new coach.
Okay.
Um, but it's still there, um, I haven't been active with it as much as we should be.
Okay.
Um, but, uh, we do have new employees in our technology department, they're, uh, very, um, interested in continuing that process, so, uh, I'm looking to start in the middle school and also continue with the high school.
I appreciate that program, that's a big thing.
No, yeah, I brought it a couple of years ago, and it's kind of sad to see it where it's at. So I'm gonna, um, encourage my new technology people that we have in the department to start moving forward with it.
Please do, thank you.
Mhm.
I remember it.
And if there are any other questions for six point zero four, we have already discussed six point zero five through six point zero nine.
Yes.
That was the presentation with Mr. McCain, are there any other questions before we move to six point one zero? Okay, the next items have to do with the executive director business operations, so Ms. Simmons is available to walk you through six point zero nine through six point one three.
Wait a minute, six point zero nine?
I'm sorry, six point one zero. Six point one zero through six point one three.
Oh, yeah, one zero, mhm.
Yeah, we did that one, so, so, nevermind.
You can go ahead, Ms. Simmons.
Uh, I'm sorry, so six, six point one zero is approval of transfer for the retirement insurance payments. So since I've been here, we have been receiving in retirement payments into one account. And this account has, um, been told that it should be just an in and out account by State Board of Accounts. So me and Nelson did some little bit of research into it. Nelson was unaware that we, at that time, that we were putting it in that count, so this been there way before me, but, and the business department way before he, so the retirement fund was actually, he was paying, was paying out of the operation fund. But the money was going into another fund, so this amount is going to be transferred into my operation fund.
You say this amount, we don't see the amount down here.
Didn't put the amount on that memo?
Oh, I'm sorry, yeah, you're right.
Okay.
I'm looking at the, I'm looking at the agenda, go ahead.
No, no, you're fine. Because I might not have told, I, I'm not going. So, yes, so that is, that will be transferred into the operation fund. And from now on, when we get the receipt in for the retirees, that is what that amount is from, it's retirees that pay their medic, we still pay the medical insurance and they pay us, so that amount now will be received straight into the operations fund.
Other questions regarding? Other questions regarding six point one zero? Six point one one, approval of state board of audits, recommendations per audit.
So this was in our last au, audit, where it was recommending that I close out some funds that have been laying dormant. So this is the funds that we're going to close out of the, on the funds report.
I have to look them up. Okay.
Any questions for six point one one?
Leila, I do have a question, so a lot of these funds had to do with, um, extracurricular activities, is that the one that we had a discussion on prior to?
No, a lot of those funds, there were funds from grants that lay dormant that, um, no one moved on. Um, the funds, I think we had a talk about was extracurricular, would, would have been, with one of the schools. But that one, those are the ones that laid dormant from grants coming in, no one moved on them, or just, they just been sitting there. And state, um, in our last audit told me that we need to close those accounts and move the money to appropriate funds.
So are you saying we lose the money?
No.
Or just move it for money?
We need to close, yeah, uh, there's no activity in it.
Yeah, I think that, and I think that, oh, well, I think me and you did the last report on that, didn't we?
We did.
Okay.
Yeah.
We, I got something on that.
Yeah.
Why she move it, we can use it?
Oh, yeah, I can, yes, that's the purpose, mhm. Now, if it was something geared to her, like, um, I can't close the foundations, I would have to, if it was a foundations fund, I would have to report the money back to them.
Other questions for item six point one one? Item six point one two, approval of certified staff cost of living increase, Ms. Simmons.
This is the cost of living increase that we normally do, um, right after all units have did their bargaining. And this particular one is for the certified staff.
That's the three percent, right?
That is, I'm sorry.
What percent is this?
That's the three percent.
Three percent, okay, mhm.
And that is retro to July one, uh, twenty twenty four.
Oh, July one?
Mhm. We can't give that, this one into all bargaining units, has been closed out. We have to make all avail, available funds to the bargaining units first before we can do these increases here.
Any other questions before we move to the next item, which is six point one three?
Um, yes, I do have a question. This, um, percentage that's listed here, at three percent, is reflected on the grid in the attached page.
Yes, that is the far right.
Okay, three percent increase. Um, the reason I bring it up, because I recall that, um, the teachers received a five percent increase, correct?
That's correct.
Right.
Okay, so these people are on teacher contracts.
Those people are put on teacher contracts because we don't have another contract that we, um, put them on.
I understand that, but the board is traditionally, and we're, we're working on fixing that, but the board has traditionally given the same um, increase to administrators that they have that we have given to, um, teachers. So I would ask that we look at increasing this from the three percent that's listed here to five percent, um, to match what we give our teachers. These people, many of them are the leaders of our teachers. Um, so I think it's only fair to give them what we're giving teachers. And again, the board has traditionally given the same increase to both, uh, units.
So in prior years, we were traditionally gave all of our employees the same raise, as including all of the bargaining units and the teachers, all of it. Um, the teacher's raise was bringing our teachers up to the standards where we could get, um, them to stay, to be honest, and for us to be attractive to teachers with the highly, highly qualified. them to stay, to be honest, and for us to be attractive to teachers with the highly, highly qualified. So that was the reason why the teachers got a more of an increase this year than going into the regular barg- bargaining units.
I, I think people can always use that argument that, you know, if you don't pay me more, I'm gonna leave. So I, I don't put a lot of stock in that. I, I think, and I don't disagree that we were not, that we've not paid our teachers appropriately. So I'm glad we did the five percent, but I think the same should apply here, uh, as well. So given the, the number, do we have, is there money in our budget to pay these people five percent instead of the three percent?
I would not say that I have the money in the budget because that is the education fund. And with me doing a higher rate on the teachers is gonna also increase the, decrease the amount that is in that fund. More on a rapid base than what it is, because right now it's at a steady that we steady accumulating, and we stand at a steady, but going higher on raises is one thing that, first thing, it was not totally in the budget of bringing up everyone to the five percent.
Trustee Gomez, if I can ask a question? Leela, with regards to what we approved last, what did we approve on the twenty twenty five budget? Cause I know that we've, we've also talked about the percentage of raises, and I thought five percent was across the board unless, unless I saw something different.
No, on the twenty twenty five budget, twenty five, yeah, we're in, we only approved the four percent increase.
Across the board?
Four percent. We stacked the four percent on the budget. Saying that is my max. Due to the fact that we did some evaluation on our teacher salary is the reason why we went up to the five percent for the teacher salary. So we're already digging into the surplus that's already in the education fund on that teacher salary.
And then, uh, I guess the other question I have is regarding, so is this recommendation yours or Dr. Bernay's?
This is my recommendation.
Dr. Bernay, uh, how do you feel about giving the five percent raise here? To the certified staff?
So once again, this is the, um, certified staff, the administrators. I'm pleased to hear the board trustee and supportive, um, increasing compensation for our staff. I'm excited about it. I do want to make sure that we're a little bit conservative with that, because keep in mind, we also have non-certified administration immediately following this agenda item. And if we're, and I would also make the argument that if we're doing administration at five percent, I would, I would say we have to do non-certified at five percent as well.
I, I wouldn't agree with that. I, they're not on teacher contracts, correct?
The non-certified are not on teacher contracts.
So that, that's, that's the, that's the position I'm taking, that this is, these people are on teacher contracts, and they should be compensated to the same degree the teachers are, and we approved five percent for teachers.
If I'm not mistaken.
I'm not, I'm not advocating for non-certified. That, to me, is a totally different area. These people are on teacher contracts.
Go ahead, Ms. Simmons.
I'm on a teacher contract, and I'm not certified. So that's what I was explaining that, um, to say the teacher contract part is not a good way of saying, saying teacher contract, because my contract is on a teacher contract form.
And we're working to fix that, um, um, at our next policy meeting in time for the new, um, uh, contracts. Also, you know, there's been, um, an increase in insurance. Is there, um, uh, a way we can compensate this group of people, at least through, um, a stipend? Or what have you to compensate for the, or offset the rising cost of insurance?
I do believe I listed a stipend on here.
That is correct. So the administrators are getting a three percent cost of living and a one-time, or at least a stipend of one thousand dollars.
And this will be though retroactive? It will not be, so is it, is, I'm trying to understand this, is this?
So the three percent will be retroactive back to July first?
Right. Okay. I, I would like to see some figures. I heard before at a board meeting that, um, that we could not afford a position. And then, and then after that, I saw increases in upper level administration salaries when I had heard from the CFO that we didn't have money for other positions. And now I'm hearing it again. So, you know, i- it seems to me that, you know, that there's talk on one hand and the reality on the other hand of, you know, we don't have enough money, and all of a sudden we're giving, uh, upper administration some pretty exorbitant salaries, in, in my opinion. So I, I, I would really like us to consider upping this to five percent, Dr. Bernay.
Thank you, we'll take that as an advisement.
Yeah, I just want to say that when Jesse, trustee Gomez, mentioned the teachers, they, their dollars are negotiated through a contract, right?
Correct.
Okay, that's all, that's all I want to say, they, they negotiate through a contract, thank you.
Item six point one three, approval of non-certified staff cost of living increase.
Okay, this is the non-certified staff, which is most of the administration here in the building, um, in the administration building, and they're all non-cert, and they're just, uh, same thing as your certified.
And may I also point out that this includes, um, our nurses, our nursing department, which are also non-certified.
Yes.
Okay, so now, now I'm confused again here. I see people here on this list, this non-certified list, who have teacher's license.
Are they active teacher's license?
One of them is an assistant principal. Again, this is the first time I'm reading this, so. If we had a little more time. And, and I understand they are not represented through a bargaining contract, nor are the certified people. I get that. But now I see at least two people here who, one, two, three.
But they are also receiving the same, um, amount. So in prior years, I was asked to separate out certain bill, um, administrators out on a different scale. So that is what I did this year. Normally, they are in the, they are on one memo of the three percent. So this year I did as I was instructed for prior years to separate them out.
What was the, what was the purpose of that?
That was a board decision.
Said the board.
A board, it was a board decision that asked that I separate them out.
Can you tell me when that happened? I really would like to know more about that.
For the last two years.
But where did you get that information from?
From the board, in a board meeting.
I don't recall, I've been at every board meeting. If you could share that information wi- with us, I would appreciate that.
So that was the last couple ti- last couple of years when I put it, the, on an agenda, and it is taking off the agenda several times before it is approved.
I, I see three of the top four people on this list, um, I'm pretty sure have active teacher's licenses.
Okay.
Any other comments from the board or questions regarding this agenda item? So once again, this would be a three percent cost of living increase and a thousand dollar stipend.
I, I do just have one question with regards to anybody, any non-cert employee making under forty thousand. I'm not sure how they can afford the cost of living, of that kind of money, so hopefully we can look at that.
So, um, depends on, on what position is held on that, a particular person that you're responding to. That has been a thing since I have been here about bringing the staff up to livable wages. I started with the clerical staff with increasing them, because when I came in, they were barely making twenty-five thousand dollars, and they had been here for years. So I started with, um, incrementing them up to be at livable wages. So, yes, there is still some employees that we probably need to bring up to standards that they have livable wages.
We, we also do have a number, we employ a number of certified nursing assistants who fall into that category, and that's just because of that industry's sort of standards on paying or compensating them.
And also there's, we're still running by salary schedules that need to be updated also, which should probably be on the next board meeting. Yes, so all our salary schedules. All of the salary schedules need to be updated and approved before October.
All salary schedules need to be updated?
Yes. I would prefer it to be updated by June thirtieth. It has to be, yes, and board approved by June thirtieth.
June thirtieth, uh, twenty twenty five, and approved by June thirtieth. So we need to have this by?
Yes.
You get that from you?
Yes. Yes. And we could have a finance, we can, before we used to have a finance meeting to discuss it first, before it goes to the board.
Well, we were gonna talk about the finance date.
Okay.
Before June, uh, we wanted to say.
Okay, every date, I'm good.
That too late?
Yeah, let's push that up a little bit.
Push it up? So. Give us a good date, I mean.
I'll look, I'll look at my calendar.
Oh, I mean, you can email us and let us know the finance, the day we want the finance, uh, meeting.
Okay.
So these are, um, some of these are coming from, um, non-operation, uh, funds, correct?
I'm sorry.
Some of these positions here that I'm reading are non, um, non-operation.
Operational, mhm. It would be a mixture of the education and operational, I do believe that's the one that has a lot.
Yeah.
Some, um, staff that's in, uh, schools, like the nurses, the nurses are coming out of education fund.
Yeah. Um, I just want to point out that in the middle of the page, job number four, seven, eight. I believe Dr. Bernay wanted to change the title of that position, is that correct? Dr. Bernay?
Which one are you on?
Four, seven, eight, it's right in the middle of the page.
Four, seven, eight.
Yep, job number four, seven, eight.
That is correct.
Four, seven, eight. Four, seven, eight.
So before we approve this, um, do we need? Do we need to change his title before we approve it? I mean, we haven't even approved the title.
I'm not for sure what the title is, but that title is connected to someone's name, and we need to, we need to approve the three percent under that person's name under that title.
Dr. Bernay, when you plan on changing these titles?
So the restructuring for next school year would be at the May twenty-seventh board meeting.
So all of this should be finalized by June?
There's actually a couple of titles here, um. Do we, um, do we approve this as is or, or vote on it as is, or do we wait until we change the titles?
So allow the, um, office, business office to go through and review, um, to make sure everyone is the correct person listed. However, the, um, the structural restructuring change doesn't impact the board's approving the retro, because that title goes in effect for the next school year.
Okay, and, uh, this is my personal perspective here. I don't recall ever approving, moving people into a non-certified position when they have a, a, a teacher's license. So we could revisit that as well.
We'll verify those, um, two individuals as well.
Yeah, there's actually, yeah, three.
And we'll get the board an updated memo, um, as soon as possible. Any other comments or questions for item six point one three? Six point one four is approval of the summer school reading interventionist program. We're gonna ask Ms. Gutierrez to come and give the board a high-level overview.
Good evening, I have the summer school reading intervention program. Per the state, this year, we have to provide reading interventions for all of our I read kids in grades two and three. And part of the, um, requirements are that our teachers, instructors, and tutors have twenty-five hours of early literacy endorsement, science of reading training. And so, um, I'm asking that I can utilize the paraprofessionals in the district who have been, um, trained on our specific reading program, program interventions to support the summer school and work with these students specifically in I read two and three.
Yes. Yeah, so currently, I'm sorry, you have questions for clarifying?
Yes, it needs to be spelled out on this agenda. Who you want on, you say the paras?
Yes, so the paras right now, under their CBA, work under seniority. For this program, this would have the program us be able to hire specific paragraphs with, I mean, paras with the training necessary to, to work in our reading classes. And that's only limited to the paras who received the reading intervention training, such as Reading Horizons Discovery, Readable English, um, and Reading Horizons Elevate.
And if I can, um, also add to, so, state of Indiana gave very stringent summer school guidelines for this school year. And one of those guidelines does impact the way we've typically had a practice of, if I'm a paraprofessional with seniority, I get to work summer school. Well, because of the stat guidelines issued by the state, we're asking the board to adopt that program, because that will say, yes, we're, in accordance with the state, in order to be a paraprofessional or a teacher for this summer school program, specifically for reading, you had to have been trained for Reading Horizons or Readable English. Other questions or comments? Thank you, Ms. Gutierrez.
I'm sorry, so this program runs, what, two weeks?
This is, they'll, the paras will come in and they'll be hired for. This is, the paras will come in and they'll be hired for summer school assistants. So, our summer school is from May 28th all the way to June 26th. Yeah, it's a four-week program.
Yeah, what grade level those kids is?
Two to three.
Correct, grades two and three.
This is showing June 1st as a start?
Our high school, well, I think June 1st is Sunday. Since they are the paras, if they began June 2nd, it wouldn't be a problem either because they'll be working with the, they'll give us May 28th for the teachers to get their rosters and get routines going so that when they get there, they'll be ready to service the students.
These are at all, all four elementaries?
We're hosting summer school across town, one at Washington and one at McKinley.
And then, how are the students selected?
We are mandatory tutoring, our summer school for all of our third grades that did not pass, and then all of our second grade that did not pass I read.
What if they don't?
If they don't pass, they get three opportunities this year, so we're gonna give it to them again in spring. So, if they, if they pass in spring, they won't have, they like, congratulations, you don't have to go to summer school. So, we'll be very proud of that. And then, if they go to summer school and they don't pass again after their third chance, they will be remediate, well, retained with a remediation individual plan for them on their reading. But if they're good cause exemption, that means our special ed and our EL students, if they have a plan, they will not be retained.
When you say mandatory, parent opts out, the student gets retained?
Most of our parents have opted in.
Okay, great.
We have, we have full rosters for both schools.
Oh, great.
So, you have the data already for the test scores then, right?
For the first round, but they're preliminary. They take it in two weeks? May 12th and then the week of May 19th, and then the kids that run through summer school will take it the last week of summer school.
So, when can the board get the data?
Usually in July. It's embargoed until the state...
We get it in July?
Yeah, usually the end of July, you'll have your official number because they have to, they have to go through the scores and pull out all the kids who have good cause exemptions and then give us our final score.
So, right now, the kids that are going to go to summer school are the ones that you have the data on right now?
Yes, that did not pass the first round.
That didn't have passed. How many students was that? Do you know?
I want to say as a district, we had about 50% of our students who did not pass the first round.
That's half of them, right?
Yes. But also, in that 50%, are good cause exemption kids. So, that kind of, if you have a good cause, the state takes into account you're an English language learner and if you have an IEP special ed.
Yeah, but... I told you, student. I don't have any more questions.
And once again, this is in alignment with the more strict summer school guidelines issued by the state. Thank you, Ms. Gutierrez. Item 6.15, back to business operations. Ms. Simmons?
Yes, so this is a company that we approved to do the full district audit assessment. So, they will be going into walls, ceilings, underground, everything to give us a total assessment of all of our buildings. So, they plan on being in the district at least four to six months.
So, Ms. Simmons, this is what I've been asking for for the last...
No, that's not...
Go ahead, I'm sorry. I have been asking for this for the last six years.
So, we're gonna, we're gonna have a full audit assessment and with the breakdown of our upgrades and when we need to do upgrades and when our time limit is.
I appreciate it, thank you.
There are no other questions for item 6.15?
Madam President, I do have a question on this one. I'm just curious how this was procured. How did we procure for these services?
Ms. Simmons?
Break it down for me, Jewel.
So, I'm just wondering whether or not we sought multiple quotes?
Oh, yes.
Can you explain that just for the board? Not, not the details of who you solicited them from, but just the process that you get. You obtained three quotes from companies that, through an RFP, that's what I'm asking.
Yes.
Yes, so she went through an RFP process in order to select this particular vendor. And I just want to make sure we didn't just pick one company, but instead, we advertised for it. Yes.
We have RFPs. They might actually steal me out there.
And Attorney Harris brings up a good point. So, we don't have to ask the questions. As we're doing RFPs or whatever, it would be helpful for the board to be informed that there's something going on out there. We go to conferences and we may have run across vendors who would have an interest in doing this. I don't know this group, don't have a position one way or the other. It's just as a board member sitting on this side of the table, I think it's helpful for us to be aware of what we're doing, what we're putting out there to the public.
So, if I could comment on that, there are some boards that will actually bring before the board a request for approval to issue RFPs so that you know when the process starts. And if you have, happen to come across the company or whatever, you can let them know, hey, we have an RFP that's out. Why don't you go to our website? You could participate. But a lot of boards do do that. Not that you're necessarily approving the substance of the contract, but it allows you to be informed that we need these services. We're gonna issue the RFP. At that point, you can ask questions about where is it coming from in the budget, all that stuff at the very beginning, and it makes the whole process a lot smoother if you know it from the beginning.
That's a great point.
Any other question? And the book list you have are just material from the vendor? And projects that they've done in either the region or state of Indiana? If there are no other questions regarding this item, we will go to item 6.16.
This is asking permission of disposables. We have several desks, chairs, tables, cabinets, books, and like three to four gyms that's overloaded. And I want to just, we're gonna do a flyer, and the money will be going into the scholarship fund of what we sell, and it's not gonna be for a lot of, lot of money. We just need to clean up all these closets that has books from a long time ago. We have chairs from when we condensed down from one school to another. We have lunch tables, we bought new lunch tables somewhere, so we just moved the other lunch tables to another school. So, carry gosh, this building, the high school, all have these rooms with all this extra stuff in there that we, we just need to let go of.
So, we're gonna have like a sale?
Do you have an itemized breakdown of each, each school that would be, you know, what's, what's being disposed of?
Oh, yes, it would be a breakdown of an itemized of how many chairs that we're disposing of, how many tables, how many desks? Yes, because I have to have that for state records.
Madam President?
No.
Can I make a comment?
Yes, Ms. Harris.
I would recommend, just so that we complete our record, that we actually have a resolution prepared for this that'll authorize the disposal and/or sale of all the property and attach an inventory list as an exhibit to the resolution. And I think that Lila and I may have talked about this, but didn't finish our conversation regarding a resolution, and I think she even would like to see that as well, but, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think it would be helpful.
Yeah, that was the letter that I kept requesting for.
Yes.
Is that the one you're referring to?
Yes, you did, yep, yep. So, I'll make sure I have that, and it'll, it'll tell the whole story, and you'll have it in front of you. So, I'll make sure I have that ready.
I believe we do have the letter.
I have the letter.
Yes.
And I'm just suggesting that it be a resolution.
Instead of or in addition to?
It can be both. I mean, all I'm trying to do is create as much of a record as possible, but for purposes of documenting board approval of the sale and disposal. And then, we may have to include a blurb in the resolution that explains what happens to the funds that are collected. And I can talk to Lila about that. I don't know what happens with it, but you need to approve it, whatever it is.
Would this be a public community project?
Yeah, this is public.
Oh, so anybody can buy this stuff?
Yes. Yeah, y'all had one before. Yeah, y'all had one here at the parking lot right before I got here. We are disposed of equipment, equipment and also automobiles at that time.
Yeah, because I bought a desk, I remember.
Yeah, so it's, it's been here, it's been one here before. But I think that one might have been orchestrated by maintenance, maintenance had put that one on.
Yeah, it was here at the ad building.
Yeah, it was here at the ad building.
Also, Lila, you mentioned, it mentions here, computer equipment?
Yes.
So, if we can get something maybe from the IT department that they've wiped out these computers prior to sale?
Oh, no, it's just monitors. Oh, no, I'm not gonna use desktops. We always either destroy or we refurbish those. So, no, this is just monitor equipment. Yeah, yeah, they are recycled. Yeah, we have a recycling company. And automobiles, I think we approved them probably about three or four months ago. And most of those are going to the junkyard, I would be calling the tow truck to pick those up.
We can't get no buses. We can't get the buses.
Buses?
Yeah, the little buses.
Little buses?
Yeah. The little white buses?
No, the yellow ones or whatever they call them.
Yeah. Oh, they can?
Huh?
Oh, I thought they...
Certain...
Oh, I thought they had to put a hole in them or something.
Yeah, certain buses have to be decommissioned.
Yeah, right. But, but you got some that don't have to be, right?
I'm not for sure what...
Well, honey, I would like to be interested.
Are you asking me to purchase buses?
No, in the sale that you have.
She asked, are we disposing of any buses during this sale? This is all furniture and school equipment.
Oh, the little white buses?
Yeah.
No, I have to hold on to them as long as I can. Yeah, I know that they're, they're on their last leg, but until I can get to replace those. So, no, I haven't, I haven't released them just yet. I'm looking to replace them probably within the next year.
Oh, okay.
Yes, yeah, and then we can auction those off once I replace, place them, yeah.
Yeah, the buses that have to be decommissioned are subject to that grant funding. So, when you got the grant funding for a cleaner bus, you know, for the environment, a condition of that grant is you have to get rid of the dirty bus, for lack of a better word. The one that's bad for the environment, you have to decommission that one. But these little buses are not part of that.
Yeah, that's what I'm interested in, little bus.
No, and following up what Jewel said, the ones that we do up under the grant, they're going straight to the junkyard because we have to take them totally out of commission, that no one can fix them.
You know, this is just, I know this is totally kind of off point, but some stuff is nostalgia. Is some of that equipment nostalgia, like when Central first opened or when Block first opened or whatever? Like, I don't know.
I do have equipment like that. I even have workshop equipment that y'all have had since Central opened in 1987, six, eighty-seven.
Could you not put that out there? And the only reason why I'm saying that is because, and I know this, we need to set up a display. I saw it in a school, and it had things that were donated throughout the years, and it was like nostalgia, like say for instance, when Central first opened, their first prime book or their first prime program. I would like to see something like that because children don't, can't relate to the past. They only relate to the present. And I just thought that was just something...
Those probably, items is probably located in the library, and I would have the library totally done by staff before we take anything out of the library. I know there is a cabinet in the library, when I went in there today, that has those kind of items in it. So, yes.
Okay, I would appreciate, something like that at Central.
Is that Central? I was in the library at Central today. Upstairs had, I'm sorry, upstairs had, what is it? What's the two schools? At Roosevelt. Why y'all roll y'all eyes at me like that? I, Washington and Roosevelt is two cabinets up there in the library. It is probably tucked in that needs to come down for everyone to see, and then we'll make the cabinet of Central.
I would appreciate that. I would work on that program if you wouldn't mind.
Attorney Harris, when you draft this resolution, are you only drafting it for this particular sale? Or is this something that's gonna be within our resolutions?
Yeah, it'll be a general one. I've done it a bunch of times. I already have one that'll be ready. I just have to...
Should we put a threshold on that in terms of like any items under $50? Doesn't have to have board approval or...
No, she, they have to do this. They have to go through this process, even if it's just being disposed of. Even if we're not selling, she still has to come before the board to get permission to dispose of it. So, yeah, it doesn't matter how much it is. And then, there's other entities that'll sell Tahos and Suburbans or, I mean, there's high dollar value, you know, items and some that are just garbage, but, yeah.
If there are no other questions for this item, approval of disposable property, we'll move to 6.17, approval of Central High School restroom remodel summer project.
So, I recently forwarded the contract over to Jewel to review for this project. So, we have got a timeline. We also have received drawings, and we're going out for bid 26th. I do believe we decided today. Yeah, this is the restrooms, mm-hmm, it's the AIA.
The restrooms now.
This has addressed the concern raised by our student board member as well as other Central High School students since we've been here, so we're excited to be moving forward regarding this project. The next item is the approval of lighting upgrades.
Sorry, there was just one question, it was... Gonna ask, this is kind of related to what Attorney Harrison mentioned before. Was this, this job bid out?
Yes.
Was this job bid out?
Yes. We did awards probably two board meetings ago, I do believe. We awarded it.
If I could make a comment, so I think there, at some point, there would also be, in addition to just the memo regarding the recommendation, also a little spreadsheet or a little, you know, diagram that would show when the RFP or the bid was publicized, who the responders were, and then what the net result was of them being the lowest or most responsive. I think that's the part that's missing, why you're getting questions, yes.
And we'll go back through and verify, I believe, where those two board meetings go, when we had a number of bids, there was probably a summary discussion on the bid where we compare two or three of the other applicants. But it would be helpful to us to have sort of like that sort of cover sheet as a reminder.
I thought I'd seen a dollar amount on here.
Oh, which one? Yes, there is a dollar amount in that. That is also the one that was also in the bid.
And did it call for...
It's tucked way in there too, Jewel.
Oh, so it's calling for a construction manager as well?
That is being handled by the company that is doing this.
But they're still billing, billing us for that? Right. And is that, is that person... Is, is he an employee of this group?
That's my understanding.
Who's an employee of the school?
The construction manager.
No, he is an employee of the Panjar Company.
Of the company?
Of the company, uh-huh. There's no employees in that. This is also the company that did HVAC systems at Harrison and McKinley.
These will be ready for school?
We push them through, yes. I want the bathrooms today, um it's pretty well open for them to go in and basically do a total gut in this replace all. Uh, some of them is very indecent.
We have um, working with our instructional technology department, we do have a contingency plan in place in case any of our summer construction projects are off schedule. That will not, um, that will allow us to still start school on time. I think we're still flipping through the white, uh, the light, the um restrooms, so I'm pausing before we move to item six point one eight.
And Lila, I'm not gonna have any changes to the agreement, it is the standard AIA agreement.
It is the standard AIA.
Double check.
Okay, that's fine, thank you. I forward one over to you, another one to you today. Okay.
And obviously, if you come up with another question, we have time to go back. Item six point one eight is the approval of lighting upgrades.
Yes, so most of these lighting upgrades is uh ne- well needed. Um, Washington is the one that is getting the most upgrade in the library in the high school. We're gonna upgrade some more in there. Washington inside, out, and around the perimeter is gonna be upgraded. And also in the front parking lot, we're gonna add another light to the front parking lot. Years ago, I guess, the other one got knocked down and it was never replaced. So, we're gonna add another light pole to that front parking lot at Washington. The high school, we're gonna add more lighting in the library, um just to brighten the library up some. Where Dr. Burney had a meeting today with um some students from the high school, and that was one of the things that they talked about was the lighting, and I had already put it on the agenda to address that.
And these will be LED retrofits?
Yes, they are, all of them.
Just to, and I believe I shared it with Dr. Burney a couple of days ago, with regards to NSBA partnering with Go Green Initiatives. Um, this year, they're giving out ten schools, fifty thousand dollar grant, um which will be announced at the Cube Conference. So, hopefully, we get an opportunity to submit that proposal. I think the deadline is the fifteenth or the, or the fourteenth of May.
Yes, yes, that, that there, I'm waiting on one number because they asked us to get a energy, energy efficient number from another vendor, and once I get that number, I'll close out our grant.
If there aren't any other questions regarding six point one and the lighting upgrades, trustee Gomez.
Yeah, there was a um question, two questions, I had, one was uh the project for the tennis courts. Uh, how does this mesh with the um resurfacing?
So, the project for the tennis courts, we're um, we just received a bid for the resurfacing. So, we're gonna start the resurfacing uh once we find a fence company that we have to, the resurfacing company asks us to find a fence company so we can roll back the fence so they can do all the dumping, so that's the next step that the AD is looking for, is that fence company. And once that, we'll start on that. And then we also going with another company for the actual painting of it. So, um, there will be a model that we will be able to present to the board where we're gonna have, put it this way, our last two courts on on a tennis court closer to Indianapolis Bu- Boulevard would be the pickleball?
The pickleball courts, yes.
Two pickleball courts, yes, we'll have those, and then all the rest of them be tennis courts.
Will there be a change because there's only one entrance into those courts?
Yes, um, the AD is asking for a second entrance to be added on the other side of the fence also.
Okay. Um, somewhat related to this, I'd asked previously about the um, the um the LED uh display at the uh marquee, if you will, at the high school.
Yes.
Can we, is there, is there anything that we can do to?
That is um a summer project also. We actually added another NIP school meter to that, so the reason why we're gonna add a meter out there instead of running that wire from the school is because if we need to do anything different with the lighting of the court, it'll be electric right there. Or if you decide to put anything in that big space um right there at Central, it'll be electric right there, easier to um get to other than running it from the high school all the way out.
Um, I have unrelated questions, I don't know if Attorney Harris can help with this, but um I've seen communities in Illinois where they, they use their marquees to advertise a local grocery store. Is that something the district is able to do?
You are able to do it, um, it comes with some challenges when you do it because then you have to basically open it up to everyone. And there may be things advertised that you as a board or the administration is not in favor of. Uh, an example, some, you know, a company that smell, sells vapes or something may say, hey, I wanna come and advertise. Why are you limiting me? But, and then you get into an argument about what the content is. So, it comes with challenges, but to answer your question, yes, it is possible to use it for that purpose. Generally, it's like a two-step process, the, the easier thing to do is to open it up to community-related announcements and not necessarily advertisements for the sale of goods or services. So, there's a discussion that you can have, there would be, if you were interested in doing it, it's something that you could discuss during the policy committee because there'd be a policy associated with advertising on the marquees.
And then, uh, related to, I, I'm not sure, but I know one time our print shop was pretty active. They had, if I'm not mistaken, done T-shirts and things um like that.
They ain't doing nothing.
Mainly for the schools, and that's why I'm bringing it up, it really, if, i- is what, is, does the school district have an opportunity if it were to present itself for, let's say, a CTE program for us to, you know, St. Catherine's has an event going on and you know, they outsource their stuff to a local print shop. Is there something that, is there a way for us to try to partner with them and maybe get whatever they're paying to misprint or whomever to pay us?
Yeah, I think there's a way, we just need to have those discussions, but there's, there's a way.
Yeah, Ms. Simmons.
Um, Dr. Bray, can I talk on the subjects that we had this morning about the print shop? So, our print shop is currently um suiting itself up to have a student, like it's gonna be a student class, like a CTE class that goes through it. Um, Jeremy has been working recently with certain students that come in with him, that him and Katrina need to work with getting um ads out, um, getting the things that's sitting in front of the house, I can't think of yard signs. So, we have purchased a machine with extra money to do a full print shop there in our school. And Jeremy works with all of the vendors, like in the school, like our food service. He does the printing for them, so our, we are getting the shop up to where our students have a CTE program first, and then we'll go outside of that. Yes.
Christopher, I own the restaurant, and I wanted to advertise Diane Food Services. Uh, could our print shop do that for a fee?
It would be a fee that I would have to get approved by the board to actually make it uh sales. That would have to go through state and the board to make it, yeah, but, yep.
But it also could be a part of the CTE.
Yes, we're, we're pushing forward to, um, and we've been doing it for the last two years, and now we have the equipment to handle it that um Jeremy is working very well with our um schools to get it done.
Yeah, you have, from my understanding, three new machines, right?
Yes, I do.
I saw them, they were nice machines.
Yes, I do.
And, and I would like to be glad when our students get a chance to get in there to utilize the machines that were bought, yeah.
Yes, so that was brought up this morning, Dr. Burney can.
So, that, that, that would be a moneymaker after you get everything state-approved or whatever. Because the community would use them. The community would use them, I would use them. Uh, as far as the marquees, uh trustee Gomez, you're talking about something like the housing authority debt? Yeah, okay. Trustee, Vince, what's going on?
Other questions regarding the lighting updates?
Yeah, I do, I just have, just one comment with regards to, and I'm gonna go back to, to the bathrooms real quick, the restrooms. If they can also look at motion detectors, so when you're actually going in the bathroom, the lights turned on automatically.
Okay.
Um, it's something simple, but it saves money as well.
Yes, I think Central has a couple, but I, some of them, most of them are not working, so I make sure that he relook at that when he goes, um, when we, actually, we need to talk to him tomorrow about that because he's gonna go off a bit for that.
I believe those conclude all of the um items for the executive director of business operations. Next item is six point one nine, approval of title change for director of special education to director of exceptional learners. Questions from the board?
Madam President, I have a comment on this. I mentioned, I think I mentioned this before, but on the title change, um, we just need to make sure that it's noted somewhere from an HR perspective that this person is still the director of special education.
Thank you.
Because that title is defined by statute, and it requires that the director of special education, at least that individual in their initial term be signed to a two-year contract and other conditions, and all those conditions are tied to the title of um director of special education. So, you can change the title so that for purposes of, you know, human resources, they go by another title, but still reference it somewhere, and then when we do the contract, if, when and if you need to have a contract with someone else, we'll reference director of special education in there somewhere too.
Right, because it seems like we're double hiring.
And also, also in a financial standpoint, that you would have to zero out the, the director of special education line item and, and kind of place it on the, the new line item.
The new title.
Yep.
Okay, other questions or other comments, thank you for those. Okay, the next?
But this, this position. Well, it's gonna be posted.
That is correct.
Yeah, but outhouse, how you gonna do this, in-house, outhouse?
Both, it'll be posted internally and externally. All right, uh, other questions or comments regarding six point one nine?
One nine? No, oh, okay.
Item six point two zero, approval of new position, director of secondary curriculum instruction and career technical education.
Yes, now, we had some conversation about this, this position too. Because, um, like we were saying, we have, uh, I don't know why I keep forgetting this individual's job title, I don't wanna call their name.
Uh, director of school improvement.
Yeah, director of school improvement, okay, so now, um, just looking at that individual's resume, like I say, we, we see that they have a lot of history with CTE and a lot of his, well, no history, I didn't see anything with the funds, only thing I seen was just some history with CTE. And so, uh, we, the board, when you, when you have like this position here, uh, director of secondary curriculum and, and a CTE technical, Mr. Harris suggested that you.
Yes, I'll jump in, um, so we had this conversation, and I think there, the board would wanna make sure that there's no overlap in the duties of that, that original position that we're talking about and the one that you're talking about now. So, if you could provide a job description that'll show exactly what the responsibilities are in each of those positions so that there's no overlap. And then you all can ask any questions based upon the descriptions that you see and go forward from there.
Yeah, because, yeah.
So, we're, we're just wanna make sure that there is no overlap between the current director of school improvement and the director of secondary CTE.
Correct.
Oh.
And, and I think, my answer to the question was the job description should clear that up.
Absolutely.
Whatever those details are, it should make it pretty clear.
Yeah, so we'd like to have the, we never got, um, how can I say? School improvement does not reflect the um, the resume that we got, okay? As far as them saying that they get, they're qualified for this, this is what I'm saying, okay? It's more CTE, what we've been, what we've received. There's nothing in there that tells us about titles, funds, anything of that sort, did you recall reading anything? They say a title, but the focus was CTE, was focusing with CTE, is what, uh, well, we was under the impression that they was getting hired for that as well as the, the uh, the title, because uh, from my understanding, that was the reason why they were getting paid that amount of money, because they were gonna be doing two positions. But now, we see that they're, you know, they were on their, on the personnel report at school improvement, so and, and, and it's not only just that position, it's, there's some more, it seems like we just hiring with, with just some different kind of names. So, I think, I'm sorry, if you want, what I think she's saying is, is it's getting a little bit confusing, so we just need to don't change anything else until we all sit down and talk about, because it's, it's getting confusing. Even with the director. Even with the director's position, it's, it's getting, it's getting confusing and we don't know. Didn't need that now. And we don't. Now, we see it on the, on the personnel report. Right. As being, you know, and then too, it goes back to these dollars, where's these dollars coming from? First, we say we don't have no money. Trustee Gomez was saying, then we get to, we have money. So, I think that that needs to be clarified with the board. I think, I think as far as applications or resumes or whatever, I think just we, we, I'm asking you as a board member, or as for me myself, we just need clarification on these job descriptions. Because they're just floating all around, and I just keep seeing the same thing over and over. I guess, uh, social emotional learning, then all of a sudden, you have student support, and then it all, that person's job title, it kind of connects or goes into that particular position, that's what, that's what we got. Okay, but when we got, when we got social emotional, and then we also got student support. When you look at it, when you look. When you look at it, when you look at the job description and you investigate it, it's basically.
The same thing.
The same thing.
The same thing.
But, so, we just need to just, for me, I just need somebody to just sit down and let us know what is what.
Yes, yes, because I, I just.
And I think, I think we deserve that because we're not going to just keep hiring people and, and it's overlapping and we're just saying yes and then, no. I need you to do your administrative scale of your personnel scale and just get it right, get the positions correct. So, we want to keep going through this over and over again and have to say, well, no and yes and no and no. So, let's just get some clarification on this. That way, we'll know which direction we're going and we won't have this problem. Because now, if you keep doing it like this, guess what? It's going to get table because we confused. You might not be confused, but we are.
That's right. Yes, so that's.
So, one of the, I will respond by saying, one of the reasons why we did combine the Director of CTE with the Director of Secondary is to not have an additional administrator.
Okay.
Because if you recall, the challenge was finding additional funds for another administrator.
Okay.
Another one, but that, but the other one, but from my understanding, it was, it's just only for secondary. It was not for CTE. Because like I said, when we read, when we read Mrs., I won't call her name, we under the impression that.
And I, I want to, I want to sort of focus the board and help them sort of separate the two titles.
Okay.
Because I think what the board is doing is sort of hyper-focusing on the current Director of School Improvement who has extensive career technical education background, workforce development, but also has significant grant management experience, which is why she was recommended for that position. And I want you to divorce the two from the role of the Director of Secondary and CTE because they are two different roles. The Director of School Improvement was a title that I preferred to call whatever the former title was, with Director of Federal Grants. So, that title, School Improvement, is a little bit more in alignment with other schools calling that title, that role, someone's in charge of school improvement. And so, I know that the board is aware of, um, the Director of School Improvement's background of CTE, which may be why they are obfuscating the two positions. The Director of CTE position I'm recommending be combined with the Director of Secondary, which the board, I believe, earlier this year recommended that we have at the building level, um, despite the superintendent's recommendation that we did not need one. So, that is why we have this new title, Director of Secondary and CTE. I've also had in my previous district, the same title, Director, and keep in mind, this was a high school district. So, my Director, my curriculum Director was also the Director of CTE. I did not have a separate Director of CTE and a separate curriculum Director. That person compenses both those roles.
Yeah, I understand what you're saying, breaking it down that way, but you said that, you said that this individual was going to be doing CTE and, and funds and this is why they got two, two titles for the amount of money that they were getting paid.
I believe you're, I believe your understanding that I said that because that person has a wealth of experience, she would enhance our CTE program.
Mm-hmm. Okay, so, just, so, to just calm this down, just get us the pos, the titles, the positions, that's, focus on that and we don't have to keep going over and over, over and over again with this. That way, we won't be confused because.
The descriptions.
The descriptions, that's all. Descriptions, even though you changed special ed to something else, just give it to us, don't change anything else, don't change it to special ed number two, uh, number three, just say special ed and this is the new job position. We just need some clarification, that's all. Then it won't be such a hassle. But when we, you know, when you keep changing titles, I get it, but then some days I don't get it. Because I'm confused.
I hear you, I'm, yep. Yep.
Any other questions or comments for 6.20?
Let me see, what is 6.20?
All right, and the last item is 6.21 and I will defer that to Madam President.
So, I'm going to, um, I ask my colleagues here about the, uh, something from the State Board of Accounts that asked of the board to get a second person, uh, to oversee the dollars, uh, that we are, that the school is, is utilizing here. And one, 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 uh, uh, my understanding is that there was a situation where our CFO was out and the board voted for, uh, Mr. Penya to be, take that place with the salary. Do you remember that, Mr.?
Yes.
Yes, I remember.
And so now, so since the Board, State Board of Accounts asked us to get somebody, we discussed that we would rather have somebody in-house and that would be Mr. Penya if he, uh, uh, would accept the position that the State Board of Account is asking us to do. So, with, and if he does not then, that would be something that we would have to post because it's my understanding that they asked for us to get somebody else to oversee some of these dollars.
And he's very familiar with this district.
You remember that we did that, Ms. Harris?
Yes, I do.
Okay.
He did very well.
If, if I can add.
Go ahead.
I believe myself and Trustee Smith was at the exit interview with the State Board of Accounts. And I think one of the items that they mentioned is to have somebody sort of like oversee the checks being written, you know, things like that and sort of like, uh, what they call, they call it internal compliance.
Right.
Uh, we just added the officer at the end of it, but, uh, just, yeah, internal controls, there we go. Yeah, so that's, you know, just having somebody. Now, uh, I think we, myself and, um, Madam President did speak with, uh, Lila and she did stated that she did, um, offer those duties to various individuals within her department. But, um, we just want to make sure also too that they're compensated for having to do those extra duties. Because at one time, we did put it out for bid. I don't know if you remember that. And I believe only, there was only one candidate, but that candidate, we didn't hire that candidate. So, and it was still up in limbo, but, so, I think, um, I think, uh, Madam President does have a good point. Just to make sure that we're in compliance, we would like to know who that person, those job responsibilities are towards. Um, and I think we do have a recommendation too. Um, and I believe, uh, Lila also responded to that as well as far as maybe having Penya or somebody in her office handle that.
Madam President?
Yes.
If I could, so, did, did the State Board of Accounts reduce any of that to writing or was it just a convert? They did?
It's in the findings.
Okay, good.
It's in the findings.
They were saying you have to, you know, not saying, it's like a checking, but you know how you are.
Mm-hmm.
Two people have to be able to sign off on a check. I'm just using that as an example, a check in balance. Because, you know, if one person is handling everything and then it's, it's like.
Yeah, there's no internal controls to make sure.
Internal, right.
So, the reason I asked if it was in writing, we can incorporate that into a resolution and that way, if you want to document proof to State Board of Accounts that you complied, you know, with their finding directive or whatever it's called, you can show the resolution. So, I think we just need to incorporate whatever it is that they said as part of the duties of whoever's going to do this. And then you can make the appointment of that person. And then we can redo that anytime you need to reappoint someone else if they happen to leave or say they can't do it, you can adopt that same resolution again, but naming someone else, designating someone else.
Correct.
Okay. Lila, do you have that information? Just so I can plug it into the resolution?
Yeah, um.
I got it. I'll send it to you.
I do know there was one audit that they were requesting separation of duties because I was the only one in my net side, me and Nelson. So, we put people in place for the separation of duties, um, as far as I would have to find the wording that they used in there for your point.
So, depending upon what it says, there's probably two ways you could do this. You could do a resolution that addresses this specific issue or you also could look at an internal controls policy through the policy committee.
Yeah.
That addresses that and maybe some other internal controls issues and make it kind of broader beyond just what they're mentioning. So, or, or both, you could do both. You could do a resolution and address it, um, in the internal controls policy. I think there already is an internal controls policy, but you may want to amend it to include all these most recent findings.
Yes, thank you. What else now? Um, yeah, um, okay, I know that's the, I just want to ask, expound on this here. I mean, Mr. Dr. Bernay was talking about this as well, these conferences. So, um, there are some that I've already, that are coming up. Some, some people have already went. And, uh, me and Dr. Bernay decided, we discussed rather, I'm going to share it with the board, that, um, we'll change, we'll, we'll start after these conferences here have taken place, then, uh, that's when they'll have to, they can't, uh, go anywhere without board approval because none of these have been board-approved. It's already on this paper, right, Dr. Bernay?
I'm sorry, your clarifying question is.
Question, like these conferences.
The conference that you have in front of you have not been board-approved.
Right.
Uh, there have been a number of conferences since July 1 that several staff have attended and to my knowledge, none of those were board-approved.
Right.
Which indicates that there was no approval process before I started July 1.
Right. Okay, so, we're going to have to have a, after these are, after that, we're going to have to have a, uh.
We've got a policy.
A policy on that.
Right.
Okay.
And then we have to, believe it or not, we're going to have to cut down on some of these conferences.
Was how many people going?
And big time, that, and that includes the board.
Yes.
If you want to go to an extra conference, pay for it yourself. We, uh, we have to go to ISBA, spring and fall, we have to go, well, we're part of the National School Board Association, that's one. And if you want to go to Q, you have to, well, you don't have to, this is just a suggestion because we're spending a lot of money on, on conferences. So, we're saying, out of the three, you pick two. If you want to go to a third conference, that's fine, you pay for it out of your pocket. And maybe they might pay for the conference fee, but the hotel and all that other stuff. I'm talking about the board, I'm not talking about anybody else. I'm only talking about us.
Madam President, is there a way we can discuss this at a?
Oh, yeah, it is.
Another time, I just wanted to bring that out.
Yeah.
Only because it wasn't part of the agenda item.
Right, it wasn't. And the only thing I got to say, Trustee, is this here, um, me and Dr. Bernay discussed that when these individuals go on these conferences, we would like for them to come back. We would have them on our agenda for work session to explain to us what they went there for, is it working out, who they, who, what staff, that they're, uh, coming back informing of, of, of that, what they learned. We want that to happen now. We're not going to wait until, um, we get a policy in place, okay? We'd like to have the, have the individuals come back. And then too, the number of peoples are going to be cut down as well, uh, that's going on these here conferences as well. Okay, Trustee Rodriguez, I'm finished. So, that, so, this adjourns our, um, work session. Dr. Bernay, you have anything else you want to say?
No, I have nothing else.
Oh, no, you're tired. So, okay, do we have to do a roll call or nothing? No, we don't have to roll call. So, the, the meeting is adjourned, work session is adjourned. Thank you all.